Hello, I'm Andrew Sullivan from the Internet Society. And I'm here today to present the 2021 Action Plan of the Internet Society, initially to the Board of Trustees and then as part of the public record for the public portion of the Internet Society Board of Trustees meeting in November 2020. This presentation is pre-recorded so that the trustees can look through it and prepare any questions they might have for a real-time session that we will be having during the meeting. That is to accommodate the current situation with the global pandemic so that everybody doesn't have to sit on Zoom calls for eight hours at a time. I hope that this is useful for the trustees, and I look forward to any questions you might have once you've had a chance to look at it. This is only part of the action plan. I'm going to talk about some highlights here, but the highlights are just pieces of what is contained in the written document of the action plan. This is available to you and will, of course, be available to the public once the action plan is approved, assuming that you approve it during our meeting. All right, without further ado, I will begin talking about the plan itself. One of the things that is really important about the Internet Society is that our mission stresses two discrete things. It stresses the nature of the Internet itself. What we think is important for the development of the Internet, that it be open, globally connected, that it be secure and trustworthy. Those are qualities of the Internet that we strive all of the time to work for. But it's also important to recognize that the Internet Society's mission talks about the Internet as a tool for good of society, as a tool for human advancement. It is fundamentally a human purpose that we are engaged in here. The Internet is, in many ways, the most human technology ever invented because it's all about connecting people and allowing them to do things with their computers and with their networks in such a way that they can collaborate freely and easily with one another. And that's what our action plan is always aiming to advance. This issue of people and this issue of the Internet being such a critical lifeline for all people became perhaps more obvious than ever in 2020 because of the global pandemic, but also because of a large amount of upheaval, political upheaval in every continent except possibly Antarctica throughout the year. Through all of this, the Internet has nevertheless endured. It has remained a lifeline for many people. It does not solve everything, of course. It's not much help in, you know, creating restaurants or things like that. But it is nevertheless tremendously important in allowing people to collaborate, to communicate with one another, to maintain some of their social bonds that they cannot maintain in person, to allow meetings like this, to allow us to collaborate with one another, to share information that is important in the time of global health crisis, for instance. And the Internet showed that because of its underpinnings, it was prepared for this challenge. There was a lot of concern early on about whether the Internet would scale for all of the demand and all the rest of it. We saw increases in traffic and we saw various changes to the patterns of use that people had. We saw people sometimes struggling with download speeds and so on. And we definitely saw the inadequacy of infrastructure in a large number of places. But what we did not see is the Internet architecture itself come under any real attack at all. Because the truth of the matter is, the Internet is designed to scale exactly this way. And that has been one of the things that encourages us to continue to press for the Internet, to make sure that the Internet is there and that it is available to everyone, that this tool for enormous human good and human development should be something that everybody can take advantage of. And so we need to keep working to ensure that the Internet is there for everyone, that it is for everyone, and it is accessible to everyone. That is the core thing that we continue to work on. So last year, we spent quite a bit of time thinking about the longer term, the 2025 sort of picture of where we were going. And we set our goals in terms along that path. We tried to set goals for ourselves that were concrete, that were things that we would be able to achieve. The 2021 Action Plan is the next step along that path. It's an attempt to continue, in many ways, the same efforts that we undertook in 2020, in part because some of the plans for 2020 had to be modified in the light of the pandemic. But we will continue, in any case, to remain focused on those core goals, the core objectives that we are aiming at all the time, building, promoting, and defending the Internet. We do that alongside our community, together with all of the partners that we engage with all over the world. That is the core way that we need to work together in order to make sure that the Internet continues to bring opportunity to everyone. So this gives us a renewed sense of purpose and urgency, and we can put it into these three large areas of work. We have two areas of project work, focused things that are specific, concrete objectives we want to achieve in 2021. We need to make the Internet stronger. We need to make sure that the Internet remains vital and that its design and its deployment are not attacked in such a way that it becomes unsustainable for people to use and rely on. At the same time, we need to make the Internet bigger. We need to get access for everyone and to make sure that that access is real access that allows people to use the Internet according to the needs that they have. And the way we do that is through people, through the collaborations that we do. We have to have a strong, growing, and ever strengthening community of people who are part of the Internet Society. It's right there in our name. We're about the Internet and society. That's what we need to make sure we build. So to begin with, I want to talk about our plans for Internet growth. Now, the first of these is one that you've heard about a great deal before. All of these projects are ones that you will have heard of before. The first of these is Community Networks Project. The goal of the Community Networks Project is to supplement more traditional ways of connecting people to the Internet. Most of the Internet, most of the ways that people are connected to the Internet is built with essentially a single model. It's a sort of standard ISP, Internet Service Provider model, where you connect via your ISP and then you get Internet service. And this is a great model, and it works well, and we have no objection to it, of course. The problem is that it doesn't work everywhere, and it doesn't work for everyone. So there are places that are badly underserved. This is on every continent. This is in every country. This is in urban places, in rural places, in suburban places. There are constant problems with access. And the way that we believe we can make some progress on that has to do with allowing people to build networks themselves and interconnecting them. Community networks are fundamentally just a way of supporting communities to be able to do exactly what every other network does when it connects to the Internet. And that is build the network that it needs and then connect that to other parts of the Internet and through that to the wider Internet itself. And so this involves several pieces. Some of it is just hardware, it's just deployment and so on. But the rest of it really involves making sure that people have the skills, they have the capacity, the technical capacity, the network capacity, and so on, in order to make sure that they get the network they want and the network that they need. In order to do that also, we need to push regulators in a lot of cases because regulations are frequently designed in such a way to prevent developments like this. And so we need to make a change in that stance. This focuses our attention on local capacity. And sometimes people dismiss this as being, you know, too small. It's insignificant when what you need is a big giant project to take over the world. But of course, the Internet didn't arrive in a big giant project. It arrived one network at a time, and we believe that this is consistent with that approach. So for 2021, we plan to work with 10 new or existing community networks. We want to engage with five countries and organizations to change policies, change regulations and rules, or change their projects in order to support community networks. We plan to train 300 individuals on the sort of fundamental technologies. And also, we want to engage with at least 15 people who are going to become, you know, more field champions, people who can continue to train others who can continue to develop this work in the world, to build a global community of people who are pushing behind this. And we will collaborate with five new partners in 2021. Now, the other part of the development of the Internet has to do with making sure that the sort of bigger infrastructure and the community to support that infrastructure is available everywhere. In well-connected places, this infrastructure is ubiquitous, and it's something that we just take for granted. But in less well-connected places, what we see are pieces of infrastructure that are missing, critical gaps. Or this is infrastructure that is installed by somebody far away, somebody who is not part of the local community, and it doesn't respond to local needs. It's really a kind of, you know, mercantile imperialism where you deliver this infrastructure on the basis of the values and needs of the people delivering it rather than the community that needs to access the Internet. The way we try to tackle these problems is by solving the infrastructure problem and solving the community problem all at once. So we have to build the communities like Network Operations Groups and National Research and Educational Networks, who build the Internet in the venues that are not well-connected. But we also need to build infrastructure like Internet exchange points that allow those things to work well and effectively. What that does is it builds both the technology and the technical capacity and leadership within various places in order to make sure that what we have is a sustainable Internet for everyone. In order to do this, then, we're going to engage with five partners to help expand those efforts locally and regionally. We will improve 15 existing Internet exchange points and establish five new ones. We plan to train at least 500 individuals in 2021, and we want to engage policymakers and regulators in five countries in order to get them to see the importance of this. The difficulty in bringing along regulators and policymakers is frequently that they don't understand the fundamental problem here. And so this is an opportunity for us to be able to show, hey, look, here is a real opportunity for development, for economic development, for opportunity for your population in your country. That is a positive story that we believe will continue to allow us to have success in expanding access to the Internet. In order to do all of this, we need to be able to speak in numbers. There is a lot of information about the Internet available. There is a lot of measurement that goes on on the Internet. But what there isn't is a sort of easy way to access it. There isn't a sort of clearinghouse by which you can look through these kinds of numbers from disparate data sources and understand what the story is behind them. And that is what the Internet Society Insights platform is designed to do. We're not measuring things ourselves. We're putting things together in such a way that policymakers, journalists, researchers of all kinds can look at this and understand, oh, I see how these pieces fit together. We're launching this platform. It is launching very, very soon. It's not quite ready to go as I'm recording this, but it is up and running. So the initial Insights platform will be launched in 2020. We expect to release version two of it in 2021. That will incorporate the lessons that we get from the launch of the first version, and also it will expand the focus areas to a total of four. In order to have a bigger Internet, we also have to have a strong Internet. And this boils down to a few efforts. The first is to make sure that the Internet way of networking is the one that people reach for when they want to build the network. There are a lot of ways to build networks. Networks can be built in a highly centralized way. They can be built in a way that doesn't tend to encourage connectivity, or they can be built the Internet way. The Internet, of course, is a network of networks. Each network participates according to its needs and according to its capabilities. And this is not some, you know, magical political potion that was worked up. Instead, it is a mechanism, a technical mechanism, a feature of the architecture that allows the networks to address their local needs and to rely upon all of the other networks in the world such that everybody gets something that is better than the sum of the parts. But this network of networks approach requires certain understanding in the way you design policies for it. It requires certain understanding in the mechanisms that allow people to interconnect and so on. And all of that understanding gradually gets lost as people, you know, use the Internet as this sort of ubiquitous utility that is just available all the time. So that's what this project is all about, to make sure that people understand the consequences of policies that they might want to make. And that's the purpose of the Internet Impact Assessment Toolkit. So in 2021, we plan to train at least 200 people on the use of the Internet Impact Assessment Toolkit. And our aim is to see that at least four policymaking processes use that Internet Impact Assessment Toolkit when assessing whether the plans, whether the policies that are proposed, whether the laws that are proposed are the right ones. It is slow work to change the direction of policymaking in the world. And so it will take a great deal of effort, but this is really, really important. The world is gradually changing the approach that it takes towards the regulation of the Internet. And that change is towards a centralized model that does not allow for the innovation that the Internet has prevented for many, many years. We are at risk of losing all of the advantages that we get from the Internet, and not on purpose. It's because people don't understand it. So this is a critical project in order to help with that. A similar thread runs through the efforts to do something about encryption. Many, many governments around the world are finding new ways, sometimes old ways, to undermine the use of strong encryption. And this is usually presented as a tension between the concerns of security and the concerns of privacy. But this is a mistaken way of talking about it. Fundamentally, strong encryption is a question of security. It is the only way we know how to make people's information online secure. And so we need to continue to press very hard for strong encryption, for strong encryption end to end. And so we're going to continue to work in the coalition that we set up with some partners this year, the Global Encryption Coalition. We want to increase adoption of end-to-end encryption by 10% globally in 2021. We also want to mitigate government attacks on encryption in eight target countries. And we wanted to do that because we think those are bellwethers. One way that we're going to do this is to launch a Global Encryption Day that is an attempt to focus this energy and effort in order to make sure that people understand this is not a question of preventing, you know, only bad people from using the Internet. It's a question of whether any of us is safe and secure online. We need strong encryption. Another area that is difficult for the Internet to deal with has to do with routing security. The global routing system is the thing that we all depend on all the time, anytime anything traverses the Internet. It's how the Internet works. And yet, it was designed for a world that was perhaps somewhat smaller. It was designed for an environment in which most of the network operators knew one another and so on. And a result of that is that the global routing infrastructure doesn't always work the way we want. And so we need to add some security to that. And the way to do that, because it's a network of networks, it's distributed, and in a network of networks, there's no center, and so there's no center of control. So you have to get all the networks to participate. And that is the goal of the mutually agreed norms for routing security. This project has been going on for several years. The Internet Society has been incubating it, but really, it's intended to deliver a functioning society of routing people, people who are interested in routing, who will be able to continue this project and continue the community to build it and grow it. What we want to do in 2021 through the Manners Project is to see a 10% decrease in routing incidents globally as measured in the Manners Observatory. We hope that we will see a 30% improvement in Manners participants' conformance, and that isn't just when they're onboarding, but in fact, really, one of the goals is to make sure that this holds on for, over the course of the lifetime of participation. We aim to see 10% increase in route origin authorization in order to make sure that we get the advantages of the signed infrastructure in routing. Similarly, we want 5% implementation of route origin validation by 5%, or rather, we want to see implementation of route origin validation by 5% of the Manners participants, not 5% of the time. So that is the goal of making sure that the routing system can be secure so that we can all rely on it. We also need to preserve the open Internet model generally. The open Internet is the thing that allows us to be successful in using the Internet, in relying on it. It is what has made the Internet such an engine of growth. These open standards, the open basis of the Internet are as critical today as they were in the early development of the Internet, and yet there's a drift away from it. So we are going to protect the open standards that underpin the open Internet model. And this is primarily through our efforts engaging with the World Telecommunication Standardization Assembly, which is now slated to happen in 2021. Although while I am recording this, there are some intimations that it might in fact slip into 2022. We continue to advocate for greater openness, transparency, and collaboration in all of these kinds of assemblies. And we are hopeful and we believe that in the lead-up to or during WTSA, we will have four governments or governmental agencies express supports for our position. Now, these are all specific things that have to do with the technology of the Internet. That is, of course, the kind of thing that you can do in a project. You can work on a specific technology. But in order to do this, we have to build a wider community. And so we're going to continue our efforts in supporting community participation in the Internet Society. We've already identified that we need to work on engaging individual members. We're going to continue down that path. We want to improve the information, the fundamental information that is delivered to our chapters in order to make sure that the chapters have the information that they need. We intend to improve the function of the Internet Society Special Interest Groups, which historically have not always worked the way everybody wanted. We're going to strengthen our community connections and participation. We're going to do that through improved software systems. And we need to focus on the content that we deliver to people, both to make sure that it's the right content, that it's the most relevant content, and that it is understandable so that people know what it is they need to do in order to build, promote, and defend the Internet. In order to achieve these goals, we aim to have total of 5,000 individual members participating in the Internet Society activities in 2021. We're going to equip 500 chapter members with essential information related to our 2021 projects. And by the end of 2021, we'll have identified and established the five topics for 2022 through a new special interest group, community consultation effort, that allows us to build the special interest group function up. We also need to make sure that the community has the information and the knowledge that they need, the skills that they need in order to take action, take action that we need them to take. This is something that we're asked for all the time, and we have been building up our ability to deliver better educational opportunities to the community. In 2021, we're going to be offering 30 courses, 30 e-learning courses, because we do not plan to be convening in-person events in 2021. We're going to secure two partners to help with course accreditation. It's important that these courses be widely recognized, not just by the Internet Society, but by everybody in the world recognizing that these are really the courses that you need to have under your belts in order to engage with given topics. We want to facilitate collaboration between NDSS, the conference that we sponsor every year, and the Open Standards Community. We're going to do that. Finally, we need to secure partnerships in order to support our fellows. And so we're going to try to secure four partners in support of the fellowship program that we have restarted and are going to be expanding access to during 2021. Fundamentally, all of this requires resources, financial resources. And we have for many years been generously supported by our colleagues at Public Interest Registry and by our organizational members who join us and provide us with financial support. We are very, very grateful for all of that support over the years, and we hope to continue, you know, those sources of support for the indefinite future. But we're conscious that this is a narrow base. And in order to be able to do more, in order to be able to include more people and to be able to ensure that our work responds to people's needs, we need to expand that base. And it is partly about including more and being able to do more, but it is also about responding to the things that people perceive as needs. And so we are going to spend some time and effort on outreach for new diversified funding and partnership. We anticipate that we're going to find 10 new funding sources in 2021, and we expect 50 new partners who are active participants in our work. This is a big goal, but we expect that by delivering on the many, many things that the Internet Society can offer, we will be able to attract these kinds of partners. The 2021 Action Plan is our plan. It is the thing that we're going to do in order to make the positive difference for the Internet that we need to make. This is the list. We are going to work directly in the areas that affect Internet access and the security of the Internet. That's what we can do. We're going to advocate for the true, the global Internet. We're going to push our message. We're going to make sure that that message is concise, clear, well-understood. We're going to continue to press to make sure that the Internet Society's voice is the one that people turn to, the one that people listen to when they want to know what the Internet needs and what the future is like. And we will make sure that the resources that our community needs in order to build, promote, and defend the Internet, that they're the ones that we offer, that we are most effective in our work because we need to be most effective or we will lose the opportunities that the Internet gives to us. We will do more for the Internet. We will work with and alongside our global community. We will work with anyone who shares our goals. We will build our reputation as a movement of people who are driven by our shared vision. The Internet is for everyone. Thank you very much. I hope this provides the overview that you need in preparing for the discussion involving the action plan at the board meeting. I look forward to your questions.
Hello, members of the ISOP Board of Trustees. This is a presentation about the 2021 Success Measures and Targets that's related to the Action Plan 2021. So let me walk you through this presentation. So this presentation covers the success measures and targets for the things that you've already seen in the 2021 Action Plan that Andrew has presented. It is essentially a supplement to the plan itself and only visible to you. So what are success measures? They are essentially measures of performance. Each of the 2021 project and initiative of ISOP has a set of success measures. And each success measure has a quantified target. So we will know what we would have achieved by the end of the year and by how much. And it is a learning process. We are getting better as we go along, and we will get better at defining success measures and targets with time. In terms of your expectations on reporting, you will get an end-of-year report that will consolidate all of the results in summary at the end of 2021. And during the course of the year, next year, you will be able to monitor progress and achievements related to these measures and targets via the board dashboard. And so you should be able to see that starting in February 2021. In terms of community reporting, we anticipate that we will feature significant progress and achievements related to impact in the annual ISOP related to impact in the annual ISOC Impact Report. So let's get started. There are three components to the Action Plan. There is projects that's divided into internet growth and internet strong. And these are the projects that are related to internet growth. The first project is related to community networks, and the objective is to bridge connectivity gaps by building community networks and supporting the community that builds community networks. So the success measures are related to the numbers of new community networks deployed, improved existing community networks, number of countries and organizations that change policies, regulations, rules, or projects to support community networks. This is about creating, enabling policy environments. The number of individuals trained, because the more we train, the more the pool of people that can help build community networks increase in the world. And the number of new partners and organizations aligned with our work to promote CNS. The targets are in the right column, and you should already see these targets in the Action Plan document and PowerPoint presentation that Andrew would have presented to you. In terms of the IXP project, under fostering infrastructure and community development, the objective is to develop communities that build a more resilient and affordable internet by building IXP's. And the success measures are quite similar to the ones on community networks. So the first success measure is the number of new and existing IXP's developed or leveled up. The second success measure is number of partnerships to support and sustain IXP's. The third success measure is on number of individuals taking our training and the number of individuals that go on to new jobs, build a career, or that build IXP's. And the last one is number of countries engaged to support IXP's through policy change or through neutral treatment of IXP's. And the target says, you can see, is on the right corner as well. And the last project under internet growth is measuring the internet. The objective is to provide a platform that consolidates trusted third-party data on the internet from various sources. And so the plan is to launch the Insights Platform at the end of this year, 2020, and next year there will be a version two, an improved one. So the success measure is basically the launch of this version two and the usage of this platform by users. And so the success measures are related to how many users, how much of the content is utilized and mentions or citations on usability of it. The other success measure is in terms of the number of partnerships developed with data providers, and this is quite important. And the last one is the number of new focus areas developed and deployed. In terms of focus areas, this year we are focused on shutdowns. Next year, we'll expand into more areas that's related to the critical properties of the internet under the internet way of networking. From here, we move to internet strong or the projects under strengthening the internet. The first one is promoting the internet way of networking. The objective of this project is to lead a positive vision for decentralized internet way of networking. The success measures, the first one is the number of times the Impact Toolkit for internet assessment is used by policymakers and decision-making processes. The second success measure is the number of external entities that produce additional IWN use cases and case studies to help others understand how to use this toolkit on impact related to the internet. And the last one is the number of people in policymaking and ISO community trained through our training courses and activities. The next project is encryption, and the objective of the encryption project is to promote and protect strong encryption. The first success measure is to mitigate government attacks on encryption in eight target countries, and the target is to achieve 75% success rate across those eight target countries. The second success measure is percentage of growth in use of end-to-end encryption globally. And the last one is to extend the reach or number of people viewing or participating in Global Encryption Coalition and Global Encryption Day event. Global Encryption Day is a new target. We want to launch it next year, and the anticipation is that we would be able to reach about a million people worldwide, and that would be considered as a success for ISOC. The third project under internet strong is securing global routing. This is essentially the Manners Project, and the objective is to improve security and stability of internet routing. Success measure is, of course, reduction in global routing incidents, and the target is to reduce it by 10%. The second success measure is increased uptake in routing security measures, and they are very specific targets here, 10% increase in route origin authorization created by existing Manners participants. Currently, this year, we have about 500 participants in Manners. The next target is 5% of existing Manners participants implementing ROV, route origination validation, and 30% improvement in conformance from three months before joining Manners and three months after, so that we can be sure that those who sign up to Manners actually follow through on the norms that they are adopting. And the third success measure is about governance. The aim is to basically have a community governance of Manners itself, and the team at ISOC is working towards it. So by the end of 2021, the Manners team will make a decision on whether or not Manners can be transferred for community governance. At the moment, we are not quite sure yet, but by next year, we should know. The last one under internet strong is preserving the open internet model. This is in relation to the WTSA Conference of the ITU, and the objective is to minimize further expansion of scope of the ITU-related conferences to the internet. It's a little bit complicated, but essentially what we want out of this project is nothing changes and nothing encroaches on the work of the IETF and the way the internet is governed at the moment. So the first success measure is that whatever work plan that the ITU adopts at the World Telecommunication Standardization Assembly does not include study group activities that duplicate the work of other internet standard bodies, including the IETF. So the target is zero duplication, maintain status quo. The second success measure is number of activities the ITU adopts at the WTSA 20 that are regulatory in nature as opposed to technical. Again, the target is zero, nothing changes. And number of governments that support our position on new IP and or other internet-related issues, our target is four. Ideally, it would be more than that. So moving on to initiatives at ISOC, which go beyond the projects that we have selected for the Action Plan, and we have themed this as empowering people to take action, and by people, we mean specifically the ISOC community and those who support ISOC even without joining us as part of our community. The first one is attracting and engaging individual members. This pertains to the individual membership plan that you are considering under board-designated funds. The objective is to grow, nurture, and equip our global individual members to engage them in support of our mission and to enable them to act as local champions. And the success measure is to increase the number of individual members who are participating in our activities in support of projects and initiatives, and the target is to have 5,000 of them. And we will establish a baseline so that we can measure further growth of increasing participation. The second one pertains to provide chapter training, and this is about providing fundamental information to our chapters that's related to projects. Now, there has been complaints before that some of ISOC's projects tend to be a little bit too technical. We think that if we can help explain the work in a way that relates to people and to their use of the internet and how it protects their use of the internet itself, they can relate to it better and they can be our champions for those projects. And so our objective is to strengthen our members' knowledge of ISOC and its chapters ecosystem and equipping them with narratives to help raise awareness around the projects that we have selected. The success measures are the number of chapter members trained to support our mission. The target is 500. I believe this year in 2020, we've trained about 300 of them, so this is an increase in target. And the second success measure is percentage of participating chapters that implement an activity locally as a result of the training. And we expect 80% target, which is quite high, but I think reasonable. We can achieve this. The next one is improving the function of special interest groups, which is an agenda topic for you as well, because staff is proposing a proposal that came from SIG leaders. And the objective is to create a well-functioning special interest group structure that has the support of the global ISOC community that constitutes a clear added value to ISOC as well as its community. So the success measure is that this new structure is in place by the end of next year and ready to operate as of 2022. The second success measure is that the SIG topics for 2022 to 2023 is identified by the community through the Action Plan Community Consultation, and the target is to have five topics. And the last success measure is growth of ISOC members who participate in the SIG consultation. And we would like to have the participation grow, so we'd set the baseline next year based on participation if you approve the proposal for the new special interest group structure. The next initiative is strengthening our community connections and participation, and this pertains to those things related to our AMS systems and tools. The objective is to strengthen our community connections and participation through improvements to our software systems. The first success measure is percentage of community consulted approves of approach, and the target is to have 80% of those approved the approach itself. The second success measure is vendors selected based on agreed criteria, and the target is to have this achieved next year. And finally, and the most important one, is that implementation plans are developed and commenced as well next year so that we can start improving our engagement with community through the platforms that we have. And then the last one under increasing individual participation is focusing on content to support participation. This is in relation to the proposal to implement our new content strategy. As you know, we initiated a content audit this year, which basically highlighted the weakness in our content approach. It's a big challenge, and we are working to fix it, and this is part of the solution. So the objective is to maximize the strength of internet society content to deliver value for our mission. The first success measure is percentage growth in participation of individual members in our projects and campaigns. The underlying assumption is that if they understand our content better and the content is effective, it enables our members to participate better. And the target for next year is to measure current participation and establish baseline for measuring growth. And you would have noticed that this is similar to our target in the individual membership plan that I presented earlier. The second success measure is growth in audience satisfaction in terms of relevant, valuable, and compelling ISOC content over time. And the target is to measure current audience satisfaction level by demographic groups, because they are different, and to establish a baseline for measuring growth in each of those groups in terms of satisfaction over the content that we produce. And the last success measure is the percentage of content that is strategically aligned with both our strategic objectives and our content strategy. So the content audit that we did basically told us how much of it is not aligned. And so the target for next year is we aim to have at least 50% of our web content to be aligned with our strategic objectives for 2020 to 2025 and our content strategy. So this is the second area of initiatives under building expertise and capacity, driving action through knowledge. This is our training and e-learning initiative. And the objective is to provide training and e-learning support to internal stakeholders. Internal stakeholders here mean staff that contribute to measurable impact in support of our mission. So basically, the training and e-learning team provides support to expert staff that provides content that goes out to our community to support their development and learning so that they become more effective as champions of the internet. And the success measures, number one, number of online learning opportunities and number of people reached. The target is to have 30 online learning opportunities next year and 10,000 learners. The second success measure is satisfaction or perceived value rating by those who have completed a course. We have a high bar, 90% satisfaction or value rating, but our resident e-learning expert believes that this is doable. And the last one is number of partners who have agreed for 2022 pilot of revenue generation models. We anticipate two partners. These are essentially established accredited institutions who will basically pilot with us on courses that will generate revenue for ISOC. The next is preparing future internet advocates. This is essentially our new fellowships program, which you have approved and which you are also considering under board-designated funds. The objective is to build a pool of internet champions that are empowered, trained, and equipped to ensure that the internet remains open, globally connected, secure, and trustworthy. The success measure is the early career fellowship is launched. We used to call it the youth fellowship program, but we've changed it to be more politically correct to address the concerns around age and establish a baseline for number of applicants and candidates for each program annually. And the target is to have this achieved next year. The second success measure is a mid-career fellowship plan to be developed, not yet launched. It will be launched in 2022, but we need to develop it next year while learning from the launch of the early career fellowship program. And the final success measure is number of partners secured to support the program. The target is to have four. The next initiative under building capacity is sharing cutting-edge knowledge. This pertains to a very particular conference that ISOC organizes, and the objective is to foster information exchange among researchers and practitioners of network and distributed system security. ISOC has been organizing the NDSS Conference every year, and it has been a face-to-face event, physical. Next year, we will try to do it virtually, and we would like to maintain our ranking in the top five in terms of such top-tier global academic conferences. So let's see, we can do it. I hope we can. And so that's the first success measure. And then the second one is number of collaborations between the NDSS research community and Open Standards Community. So the final category of initiative is securing resources for growth and greater impact and targeting outreach for new diversified funding and partnership is the theme, and the objective is to diversify ISOC revenue sources by successfully implementing partnerships and grant funding initiative. This initiative is essentially geared towards ISOC meeting its public support test. And the success measures include increasing the number of MOU partners engaged in the success of our projects. The target is to have 50. This year, we aimed for 30, and I think that we are quite close to achieving it. The second success measure is number of new sources of funding secured in support of revenue diversification target, and we're targeting 10. And the revenue target in support of our projects and mission from these 10 new sources is half a million dollars. And so that is essentially the presentation on success measures and targets. I hope that was helpful for you, and I will be available during the board meeting to help address any questions that you may have, as would Andrew, and we would stop recording now. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're recording now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So welcome to our Q4 board meeting. This is the meeting number 154, 154 of the ISOC board. And today, we were supposed to be in Bangkok, but with the global pandemic, we are having this meeting online. We were supposed to be collocated with the IETF, and they also had the meeting, you know, this past week online. But we have all trustees here, and so I think we are ready to go. So first of all, welcome everyone. We didn't get any regrets from any trustees. As I said, we are all here. Any declaration of conflicts, given the proposed agenda? Olga, please.
Yes, if there are things about PIR, I will refuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Olga. Anyone else?
I have a conflict with the IETF LLC.
Okay, thank you, John. John, if you could capture both in the minutes, that'd be perfect.
We're way ahead of you.
Always a step ahead, or two steps ahead, actually. Thanks. Okay, perfect. So we are moving to point number two on the agenda, which is basically to document the resolutions that we have approved by e-vote since last time. And as I always mention, it's not that we are passing the resolutions now. We are just documenting them, because they were basically passed by e-vote, and they were effective as soon as we passed them. So, John, do you want to mention something about these resolutions or?
They're in the agenda, and they'll be in the minutes, and we've already voted on them, so I think we're good.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so moving on to point number three on the agenda, which is to recognize the new and rejuvenated chapters. And before we go into that, let me remind you that when we pass resolutions by acclamation, if everybody's clapping without unmuting, the only claps you will hear, they will be mine, and that's not good. So just for the record. So as I said, we want to recognize the new and rejuvenated chapters. And this time, we basically want to warmly welcome the Internet Society Chapter for Bosnia-Herzegovina and congratulate them, the chapter of Chile, yeah, because they were rejuvenated, basically. So then the board is also informed that the Nepal chapter has actually been moved into rejuvenation, and they are in that process. So I need someone to move. Olga moves, Richard seconds, and we will pass the resolution by acclamation. Okay, so some trustees, they are faster learners than others, but we'll see. At some point, we will get it right, hopefully. Okay, perfect. That is always great. I mean, to see That is always great. I mean, to see chapters, you know, that they are basically coming up to speed after the rejuvenation and a new chapters, of course, that's always great to to, you know, expand the community. So moving on to point number four on the agenda, which is the discussion on the Internet society plan. And I'm maybe mentioning, because this this meeting is being recorded, that this time we have basically changed the model because we are you know, having an online meeting. So to all trustees, they got in advance all the material. And that was, you know, slides, documents and videos. So everybody had the chance to basically watch the videos, ask questions. We had some preliminary discussions by email, actually, that was, I think, useful. And this, in this session, actually, in general, we will not go into basically any presentation. It's going to be all Q and A directly. So so basically, you all saw the plan. I I had some comments myself, but maybe, you know, first I will open the the floor for for questions and comments on the action plan. So, you know, the floor is open. As usual, you can request the floor on the chat and I'll I'll give you the floor if need. If we don't need any, I mean, if you don't have any direct question, let me make some comments. Okay, Richard. Yeah, I was taking my notes. Yeah, please.
So I think sort of a fairly specific question about the insights platform, which I'm glad we're launching. Be excited to see that coming out later this year. I was just curious kind of how we are managing, how we're tracking and making sure that that platform is meeting the needs of the constituencies it's supposed to be serving. So kind of what's the engagement evaluation practice for for making sure that is effective?
Well, since it just started, I mean, it isn't strictly speaking open yet. It's well, I think a big, you know, a big piece of this is obviously going to be if we continue to see growth in the use. That's a pretty good sign that it's doing things that people want. In addition, of course, we'll continue, you know, talking to people about things that they're interested in and so on. It's, you know, very, very early in the in the platform. We expect to add, as you can see from the from the plan, we expect to add some more some more areas of coverage next year. Keep in mind that one of the problems with the approach that we've taken is that we're we're not the source of the data. So the only thing that this can do is is put together data that other people are already doing. And one of the questions that we have is whether all of the sources of data that are needed in the world exist. So one of the things that's going to come is, you know, we'll try to answer a question, we'll find we don't have the data and then we'll go and see whether we can get such data. And if we don't, that will be an indication actually that we've got a gap in the world. And then we've got to figure out how to inspire people to collect that data as well. So that's like one of the things about this is that it's kind of an exploratory thing about what what questions you want to answer. So I don't have a completely satisfying answer to your question right now because, you know, we're just getting started. But, you know, it's the same way you would do anything when you're offering a service and seeing whether you can, you know, grow it and get get new users and so on. It's the same basic approach.
Thank you. Next is Laura. Laura, please.
Thanks. I'm not sure this is a good question for the action plan for the next session of the success metrics. But I was really happy to see the action plan has success for each of the initiatives. What I really love to understand is where the data for each one of those comes from. And I think that most, some of those things, if not all of those things are available on the insights platform, but I would love to have more in place so we can have a dashboard of where we are, where we are hitting, where we are missing, where we need to do more work as the year progresses. But I appreciate the work that's gone into it. Thank you.
So there is a, there is another board specific dashboard that I circulated a little while ago. And, you know, as we get into next year, you will see the the items on that start to expand in order to show you, you know, the success measures that that we've captured in the action plan here. Not all of those are ready yet, so it it takes time to to get these things going. But this has been, I I think I can say it's been a fairly consistent theme, both since I got here and also since Renalia got here, that we want to, we want to measure things and we expose those measures so that people can understand what it is that we're doing. My my view, there has been some discussion among the board, for instance, about the about questions that people sometimes raise about what the Internet society is doing and why it's useful. And my view has been all along that the only way you're going to answer that question is to be able to point to stuff that says, here's the thing we're doing and here's why it's useful. And in order to do that, you've got to measure these things. So that's what that that dashboard is for. Over the long run, we expect to expose a similar dashboard to our community so that people can, you know, anybody can look at it. But, you know, you've got to roll these things out one one step at a time. The 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 measures, the the source of the data itself is actually generated by the by the project. So they, you know, they're required to measure these things and that's that's what what has to happen. Some of it, yes, is in insights, but not all of it. And it will take time to to prove that we're actually connect collecting this data reliably and so on. It is, I I think it's safe for me to say, even in a public session, that it's not historic strength of the Internet society to measure itself this way. So we're 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 building that muscle up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. No, I mean, those dashboards are are very useful, actually. And the insights platform, I thought the demo was pretty cool, actually. Wally, please.
Yeah, I mean, I've started the discussion and the thread about the issue of consolidation. I thought that the response was rather adequate and it actually links to the Internet way of and saving the network of networks, also, I would say, protecting the network of networks. But I can see that the the plan has a lot to do with more training and education. That's really important and possibly in helping guide policies. But what is it that one can do further in, let's say, confronting the increasing dangers of the consolidation patterns happening, for example, in the US market? I mean, are there any real long term plans for that? Not necessarily, of course, in two thousand twenty one, but at least some, you know, guidance or research possibly to find approaches that would help protect the Internet even more in that direction.
Well, so in one sense, the answer to that is, what are we going to do? You know, if, you know, the large, the sort of most successfully capitalized corporations in the history of the universe have our our Internet corporations, we're going to have this problem and we're going to have to confront it. And some of the things that we can do about about this are, you know, we have to, we have to rely on public policy to change. And what we have to do really is try to influence a public policy in the direction that is healthy for for the Internet. We're a long way from being able to do that right now. Public policy is drifting entirely the opposite direction. And so the first thing we have to do is is sort of try to convince policymakers, lawmakers and so on that the Internet way of networking is is something that they need to re, you know, re-center in their in their plans. And I think that that's not currently a thing. It it's certainly true that there are very large, there's a very large trend towards consolidation. But this is an economic fact of the current, of the current sort of industrial policy of arguably OECD nations. And, you know, that's something that is is a problem that I think we need to, we need to understand, we need to research it. But fundamentally, it isn't clear to me that the Internet society is going to have the resources to be able to do this unless we emphasize the the ability of the Internet to put the power back in the hands of individuals and the hands of small operators and so on. And in order to do that, we need to move the public policy discussion away from, okay, these are the people that we want to cement in place as the most central Internet corporations and, you know, and and keep those ones as the ones that we can get into a room and talk to them. That's very much the the approach that a lot of policymakers have been taking over the last several years. You know, oh, we'll get these five important people into a room and we'll have a, you know, long sit down with them. And that's how we're going to make Internet policy. And I that that to me is very worrisome because I believe that what it does is tends to increase exactly the problem that you're you you're identifying here as this kind of consolidation. And and so that is is something that we've been worrying a lot about. And that's where we've been trying to, you know, trying to put our our attention in order to address the concern that you have.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks.
We could just make a quick, quick response to that.
Yeah, Richard.
I would also just highlight that one of the opportunities here for the Internet society is to bring some more diversity to the conversation about consolidation. A lot of this conversation, especially in policymaking circles in the US and Europe, is around things like social media and very top layer of the of the layering diagrams sort of consolidation concerns. And I think there's a lot of folks around the Internet, especially of moving the Internet societies community who are concerned about other types of consolidation at other layers of that. And I think so there's an opportunity for us through that Internet, we have networking to bring those more of those concerns to the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, good point, Richard. Exactly. Okay, so next is Pepper. Pepper, please.
So I was going to come back to the insights, but I would agree with what Richard just made. And there's an entire new ecosystem of small technical companies working on the technologies. I mean, you know, Gonzalo, as you know, you're familiar with telecom infra project, the open ran and, you know, Ericsson's on a different side of that, but that's beside the point. I mean, there are those trends, but when you're looking at, you know, five, more than five hundred companies coming together, essentially, it's it's not about the 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 discussions, the conversations that policymakers are focused on in terms of consolidation, which, you know, it always comes back to Fang. You know, four companies, five companies. But the there's a much, much broader ecosystem up and down the stack at each layer. And I think that that's actually extremely important, which then leads me back to the comment I wanted to make about the insights. I think the the Insights project, you know, Andrew, the the extent to which, you know, we're reliant on third parties. You know, we're not generating the data, but actually becoming a a a platform where people can find data and then actually do comparisons. There's a lot of the other, you know, the debates, the policy debates, the other discussions are fact free. And especially when, you know, it comes to, I mean, some of the the these issues about emotion and and so on. I think that there is no single place where people can find good, reliable and by the way, comparative data. So it's not just a single source on a particular metric. Insights has multiple sources. And I think over time, having the Insights platform is going to force the other, the the data collectors to do a better job. I think this is maybe one of the most important things. Initiatives as part of the action plan, especially when it comes to promoting the Internet Internet way of networking. And, you know, the core principles of an open global end to end Internet that ISOC has, you know, been promoting from the very beginning. And we have to get past these these fact free debates.
Thank you, Pepper. Thanks. Next is Ted. Ted, please.
Thanks very much. I wanted to to switch over to the preserving the open Internet model. And and to point out a couple of things about the measurement aspects of that. First, this is obviously very, very targeted at the I T. And there's a bunch of other work that I think ISOC has done well in related bodies. For example, Elizabeth's work at the African Telecommunications Union that I I don't think is being captured here. And it might be useful for you to think about how to capture those pieces. When you talk about the measurement here, the OECD and others are are pieces that go into sort of the same bucket that aren't being captured by this this measurement set at all. And the other thing is the the first two of these targets, realistically speaking, the accomplishment of them is going to be largely based on activities outside of ISOC. So you're you're going to get a success measure or a lack of success measure that's to some degree not strongly correlated with the efforts ISOC puts in. And it might be useful to think more about the measures of what activities you want to take place to try and influence it. And I think the 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 last one of these where you you talk about, you want at least this number of citations of your positions, the development of those positions and how you want to to propound them might be more effective measures here because the the final outcomes are going to be so weakly correlated. Again, obviously, I think this is a useful thing to do and I don't want us to this to be taken as my saying that focus on the WTSA is not important. I I certainly believe it is. But I think maybe this particular set of measures and the activities might need a little bit of honing.
If I could just jump in on on that for very, very, very quickly, the WTSA now being postponed to twenty two. I think not only I agree with what Ted was saying, but I think it reads, it's reinforced because we have time on the, a lot's going to happen between now and twenty twenty two. And and so these are not mutually exclusive, it's both. It's not either or, but I think it gives us a little bit more time to do exactly what Ted said. Because there are other venues, the WTSA is coming, you know, it's going to be two years or a year and a half.
Thank you, Pepper. Andrew, you want to address that or?
Well, so one of the things that I have been banging on about with the staff is that many of our projects seem to be very, very long running and sort of expansive. And the the this particular project is aimed at one thing. So that that is its goal. Its its central goal is to make sure that, you know, certain things happen or do not happen. And if there are other projects that we need to do, we need to work on that are about other things, we should, we should stand those up at separate projects as well. Because my view is that, you know, the the undertakes, that the staff undertake should be, they should have a clear beginning, middle and end. And a really important part of that is the end. And I, we haven't always been very good at that. We have, you know, we're quite good at generating activities that last for a very long time. So one of the ideas here is that this is a really very specific project aimed at one particular thing. Now, that is not to say that all of the other things that you're that you're mentioning, it 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 may be the network here, I'm sorry, that you're having trouble with Gonzalo. The, that that isn't to say that all of the other items that you're you're mentioning are not important for us. They they are, and many of them are are activities that we will continue to undertake and so on. We continue to work with with the African Telecom Union. We continue to work with partners all over the place. We continue to pay attention to what's going on in various UN bodies and and in various coordination places and so on. I take your point about the external activities being the the basis of the measure here. We we spent, and Renalia might want to talk about this a little bit, that we spent quite a bit of time in 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 building these measures this year, sort of getting people to to tackle the problem of how you measure some of the activities that that we we undertake. And this is, as I said, I, this is a sort of measurement muscle that the Internet society really needs to build because it's not traditionally something that we were really super good at. And I, you know, what we're trying to do is avoid measuring, you know, just counting activity because it's easy to count activity and it's really hard to tell whether it made a difference. But you're exactly right that there is this correlational problem, particularly in activities like that. And this is generally true in public policy areas, right? Because you're always going to have a gap between what you did and and the outcome that you wanted. Because you can never, you know, nobody's ever going to get up in public and say, oh, they caused us to change our minds. Forget that. So we have this, we we have this problem and it's it's a consistent problem that the Internet society's activities are always going to face, I I think.
Thank you, Andrew. I think Ted wanted to follow up, so.
Yes, and and certainly I I agree both with the difficulty of kind of establishing kind of KPI or OKR style measurements for for this kind of work. It is something that a lot of companies do and I I appreciate you're you're working on the muscle. My suggestion was not so much to to discourage you from working on that muscle, but to suggest that this particular set for this might need some additional that this particular set for this might need some additional work, in part for the reason Pepper was putting out, but also because some of that work's moving into T-SAG, and some of that work is moving into the distributed bodies. And the result of that is, if the if the ultimate aim isn't just to influence the the ITU, but to preserve the open Internet model, a lot of the persuasion that's going on around that, because of the WTSA moving, is is actually become quite diffuse, and it's unfortunate that you now have to track 20 conversations rather than everybody bringing those conversations into one. But that's actually going to be the reality of the next year or so while the WTSA process is shifted. And so I I I don't want to discourage you from measuring. Please continue. But I do think maybe you and and the team that's working on this might need to rethink these measures, given the changing circumstances. Thanks.
Thank you, Ted. Rinalia wanted to to talk to that.
Thank you, Gonzalo. Ted, thanks very much for that input. It's valuable, and I'll take it back to the team. Also, I want to reinforce what Andrew said earlier. We encourage the teams to think about what's the outcome that we want to achieve in the world, and that's the orientation of most of the success measures when whenever we can we can get to that. So we we sort of discourage less of listing of output, and that's why you're seeing those kind of measures now. But certainly, we focus on what ISOC can do, and then the effect that that's going to have in the world, and hopefully, that's going to be aligned. In terms of the diffused activities of open Internet model, I do agree, and we have a team that's working on institutional relations that does the liaison type of work that tracks these things. And you don't see success measures related to their work, but they definitely have them. So it's sort of like one layer below, and we'll make sure that it's all aligned towards achieving the the higher goal of preserving the open Internet model. I hope that's okay for now. Thanks.
Thank you. So I I would like, yeah, I mean, regarding the measurements, I was having some email conversations with, you know, Andrew, Rinalia and and the board. So I I think that maybe, you know, it's a good idea to address in some of the, you know, chapters in the action plan when when there's like an obvious measure, but because it's a lagging indicator, or because, you know, it's very difficult to measure, or because we don't have access to the information, just to basically just explain, look, we are measuring this, which is something else, because, you know, it's impossible to do that, or difficult, or impractical. So I I think, you know, it would be useful for readers, because then you stop wondering why are these guys measuring this instead of that? So I I think that would be very useful, because I think the whole approach, you know, to measuring that we have started like, you know, a couple of years ago or three years ago. I I think it's is is really useful, and it will help us measure impact as opposed to activities, as as Andrew was was pointing out. I I had actually, again, I mean, we we already discussed that by email, but in particular, I had some comments on the measurements on on the growing the Internet part and on the building IXP. So, you know, just explaining, you know, how how the the KPIs were chosen, I think it would be kind of useful, and and you guys can do that adding two or three sentences, you know. It's it's not, you know, anything major. In addition to that, I I would like to to also point out that it may be actually useful to add, you know, one paragraph or something, explaining how this action plan basically was developed. In particular, the fact that the community was consulted, that, you know, we started doing this in 2020, and it was kind of a bottom up approach to basically come up with some of the of the projects that we saw in in the 2020 action plan and still in the 2021 action plan. Because this is something that we get all the time on, you know, from the chapters community especially, but also from other communities, like, you know, how was the community involved in putting this together? So since we basically, you know, did a a big effort, I would say, in consulting them and getting people to to have an opinion on on the projects we're going to be working on, I think it's worth by stressing that point so that it doesn't seem that this is a top down type of thing from from management to staff and to the community, which which is, you know, it would give the the wrong impression. So I I think, you know, you you guys should take credit for for the good work you did, actually, getting consensus in the community. Okay, any any other questions? I see Walid has a question. Walid, please.
Referring to that, the other point I raised is about the the value that Internet society can bring now. It's really a great opportunity. In the past, we used to say, I mean, the there were not much tangible outcomes that one can see from the Internet society. I I disagree with that, but those who may not find them directly, then one of the many, let's say, let's say, the one of the potential services that one can offer is the insights as a really tangible method of learning about the Internet. Because researchers, academics, people have been really scattered all over the place. They really did not find the location where they can find reliable information sourced to their original source. And so this is really of great value, so I'd like to commend the team for that. And I mean, there will be obviously a round of feedback, as Gonzalo noted. And I encourage that so that to have a bottom up approach. And one of the, I mean, I can already guess that one of the questions would be, how about access, let's say, access to information about the, let's say, number of Internet users? Let's say these things that are very, very standard. I know they're a bit naive and basic, but there are very few, let's say, there's Internet stats. I'm not sure how reliable that is for access to information about the number of Internet users and their World Bank. There's so these basic things could also be added so that one could use that as a leverage in pointing out, especially for researchers, journalists, and many people who are eager to find a reliable single source for all sorts of information.
Thank you, Walid. Yeah. Maybe I had an additional, I see the queue is empty now. I have an additional, even, I mean, a bit more detailed comment, but anyway, with regards with the, you know, increasing basically the the amount of encryption on the Internet, which I I mentioned that by email, but for completeness, it would be nice actually to understand what is the current status. And and even, you know, when when I was kind of discussing the numbers, I I was myself looking at web traffic and web traffic. You know, the the level of encryption is like 85% or more at this point. But it would be interesting to understand what is the level of encryption for, you know, old traffic. And and more importantly, I mean, what applications or what, you know, use cases, they are not encrypted still, because that would give us kind of a better view on what we are trying to accomplish.
Gonzalo, I think it's really interesting that you go to the web traffic there, because that's the thing that's easy to measure and is widely measured, but it has zero to do with end to end encryptions. I think part of, I think the the team has a good idea of what end to end means, but that's going to be an important thing to articulate as we launch off onto this this measurement aspects in particular.
That that was going to be my next comment, actually. And the fact that, you know, for example, when when we talk about end to end exactly, and we had this this conversation by email as well, it would be interesting to see whether, you know, like, object based security is is considered there, or we are only talking about, you know, transport based security and all that. So I mean, I I know the the team, they know what they're doing. But, you know, just being a bit explicit sometimes on the action plan, or or not necessarily on this action plan, but maybe, you know, on the project itself, I I think.
Perhaps more importantly, being explicit with the consumers of this information, policymakers, et cetera, on what we mean by this. Yeah.
Exactly. And and that's what why I said in my email on on the list, that, you know, probably some of my comments, you know, more detailed comments, they they can be addressed as as the project goes on within its lifetime, not not necessarily now, but for completeness, I think it's good to to bring it up now. Yeah. And and lastly, I had a comment, I mean, following up what basically Pepper was saying and Ted about the Internet way of working, about, you know, the death of transit, because, you know, like, in the IETF in particular, this was discussed a lot a few years back. So kind of looking into those those type of things with, you know, big CDNs and all that, I I think it would be useful as well. And yeah, and maybe this is not the type of thing that people think about when they think of consolidation, but as as Richard said, you know, I mean, it it actually, you know, relates to other layers of the stack, and and they are actually quite important as well. Good. But all in all, I mean, thanks for putting this together. I think it's a great action plan. It captures the priorities as defined by the board and the community. And and, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing the action plan progress and and all the projects. Do we have any any other comments at this point? I see the queue is empty.
I just written there my comment about the real strong potential of an API serving the global community, because this information needs to capture in a, you know, machine readable way.
You mean about the Insights platform or?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, and and Andrew, I think he said that, you know, this is kind of, you know, in the roadmap, and and it will be done whenever they get to do that. Yeah. I I agree. I mean, it's it would be useful to have all these data, you know, to basically build, build, you know, whatever you want to build on top. I I think Walid has some ideas already, so looking forward to seeing those when when you get around to implementing them. Okay, good. Then, I mean, we we can move on to point number five, but as I said, I mean, we've been discussing both the action plan and the actual measures. So so I I don't know if someone has any concrete questions to Rinalia on on the actual success measures, the KPIs. Let me open the floor for questions. But we were discussing with Ted before that basically both slots are equivalent since Rinalia is here already or was here already. Okay, perfect. Last chance for any other question. Good. So so we close this action point, number five. And again, thanks a lot, Andrew and the team for putting the action plan together. And and also thank you for distributing the material well in advance, because this has been actually quite useful, as I I was saying before, to be able to find references, basically check things offline and while while watching the videos, the pre-recorded videos. So so thanks again.
Yeah, can I just butt in that I agree, being able to look at the video and the material and and go back and forth in the video allowed me to prepare a lot better. You know, so the reason I don't have any questions is actually because I was able to read about it ahead of time and and figure it out. So thank, thank you to Andrew and the staff for doing such a good job of prepping us.
Yeah. Also, thanks, because, I mean, the the few questions we had by email, you know, having answers to those, it means that, you know, this this session can be more effective. Yeah, Andrew, please.
So let me just emphasize, I mean, you're thanking me, but I'm the wrong person to thank. So the.
I said Andrew and team.
Yeah, yeah, but really, the staff did did all the work here, and I I really want to emphasize that. Because I I think it's important to, you know, sort of note for the record, this was, you know, in my tenure so far, this was magnitude this year than it had ever been before. Rinalia and her team worked really hard. They had a great plan for how to put this together. It was all, it was all done. Katie Ben-Gard did just spectacular work in coordinating everything. And and the the staff have embraced this this entire effort around building plans that everybody can understand and that can measure. And I think that it's it's important to recognize that as a as an organization, I think we've really turned a corner there, that the staff function of of this of this organization is now really working very hard to support the whole community and making sure that they understand what, you know, what we're going to do and what things we're hoping we we can achieve as a as a full Internet society. So that's a, that's a thing that is is sort of only implicit in what you're seeing here, but I think it's a really important milestone in the in the evolution of the organization. So I wanted to, I wanted to mention it.
Yeah, I was muted. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. But, you know, so so thanks, team, but not Andrew. I know, I know this was a team effort. That's why I was explicitly mentioned the team as well. Okay, so we're going to move into into a closed session. I see there's a couple of guys following the session live, Sam and Greg, and thanks for following, by the way. So this closed session is going to last around one hour and 20 minutes, but as you saw, it depends entirely on the Q and A. So we may be actually back earlier or later. Sorry for not being more more precise, but, you know, I mean, as I said, this is uncharted territory, so so we will see. For example, in this session, we were 15 minutes ahead of schedule, so, you know, it was faster than Kevin and I anticipated, basically. Okay, so moving on into the closed session, and we'll be back in in one hour and 20 minutes roughly. And logistically, you have to actually leave this session and join the other Zoom link, right? Is that right, Kevin?
That's correct.
Okay, so please, everybody do that, and I'll see you there.
Could someone please post that link in Slack, just so everyone has it?
Yeah, okay, thank you, Kevin. See you in two minutes.
Okay, we're recording now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, you know, we had the the executive session. We are back into open to observer sessions. We are in point number nine on the agenda. And on this point, in this point, basically, Richard is going to give us a report from from the finance committee point of view on on the proposed budget. So I don't know where Richard is on my screen. Okay, Richard, please go ahead.
Thank you, Gonzalo. So I think all the trustees have seen the proposed 2021 budget. I think the overall themes to highlight here are, one, funding the action plan that we've we've just discussed, and two, holding the line on the size of the budget. So this budget overall sticks within the same envelope as the 2020 budget of about $39.5 million. But as you can see in the details, there's a little bit of rebalancing to represent the the shift in priorities between the 2020 action plan and the 2021 action plan. The finance committee did a review of this budget in advance of this board meeting, and I think we are enthusiastically able to recommend it for approval by the full board.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks a lot. Any questions for Richard? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move to to agenda points that they're going to be, you know, 10, 11, and 12, where we're going to be passing resolutions related to the budget. And as usual, we will be basically going through a roll call, because every time we we basically deal with money and and budget allocations, we do roll calls. So I will be calling the trustees by by name, and then you will be voting. So let me get the list of trustees here. So I do it in in the right order. Okay, or or I I will use the screen, actually. Okay. Hopefully, it doesn't move too much when when I'm counting votes. Okay, so so moving on to to point number 10, then, agenda point number 10 is to basically approve the budget of PIR. Any questions before we go there? Okay, good. So I need someone to move. Richard moves. George seconds. And and then, as I said, we're going to do a roll call, so I will be naming you. So Richard, and the the options are yes, abstain or no. And and by the way, Olga mentioned before that she's recusing from PIR discussions. And and usually when when trustees recuse, they typically abstain. Is that right, John? Yes. So typically, recuse, recuse trustees typically abstain in in the votes. Okay, so Richard, please.
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Olga?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Olga abstains, right? Okay. No, no, it's it's complicated. I know. Thank you, Olga. So for the record, Olga abstained. John, please.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Walid?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Maimuna?
Yes.
And Gonzalo, yes. So that's 11 yes votes and one abstention, so the resolution passes. And for the record, John, yeah, Olga was the abstention. Okay, and now we're going to move to to point number 11 on the agenda, which is to approve basically the budget for the organization. In addition, we have to approve some some resolutions regarding board designated funds. And you have them all listed on the agenda. So as as usual, when there's a lot of resolutions in a in an agenda point, I will ask if all trustees are comfortable approving them all in a single vote. Otherwise, we will be basically voting one by one and on each of them. Anyone uncomfortable with voting only once? Okay, so so this is how we're going to proceed. So point 11 on the agenda, any questions before we move into approving the resolution? Okay, I see no questions. So I need someone to move.
We'll move.
Hey, okay, so that was Pepper, right? Yes, and who seconds? Okay, Ted seconds. Good. So again, I will be, I will be going, we're going to pass this by roll call and exactly the same procedure as before. You can vote yes, no, or abstain. Richard, please.
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes.
Olga?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Walid?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Maimuna?
Yes.
And Gonzalo, yes. So the resolutions in plural pass unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to point number 12 on the agenda, which is the approval of the IETF LLC funding agreement. And, and here, and at the beginning of the call, John said that he, he was recusing himself. So I'm assuming he will abstain from this. So any, any questions on this? The, the agreement was circulated on the, on the list and you have all seen it. Okay, no questions. I need someone to move. Okay, Richard moves. Heather seconds. And again, the same procedure, you can vote yes, no or abstain. Richard?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Olga?
Yes.
John?
I abstain.
Mike?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Walid?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Maimuna?
Yes.
And Gonzalo, yes. So the resolution passes with 11 votes in favor and one abstention. And the abstention is, is John. Okay, thank you. That takes us to, to the end of the open to observer sessions for now. And now we're going to move again into the, into an executive session. And the executive session is supposed to last for around half an hour. But again, as before, we may finish a bit earlier or a bit later. We try to basically stick to the agenda for those attendees that they are following live. But, you know, not, not, it's not easy all the time. So, so having said that, we will be back in around half an hour for, for any other business before we adjourn. Okay, thank you. So again, the same procedure as before. We all go into the other meeting, which Kevin just sent. So, so see you there in one minute. Bye-bye.
Okay, we're recording now.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, so we had the, the executive session, the closed executive session. We are back into the open session. And the other remaining thing to do is to go into any other business. So I will ask trustees, any other business? This is AOB, point number 14 on the agenda. Walid?
I only want to say how impressed I am with the interaction we got with the reform working group. So that was really positive.
Yeah, exactly. We, we, we launched it like this week, actually, so only a few days ago. And we are, I mean, already getting a lot of feedback and everything, so. Of course, Olga is chairing the, but before you do that, it seems that we have a two-way channel with Sam. So, so Sam is listening to us. So thanks again for, for following this. Olga, please.
Thank you, thank you, Walid, for bringing this up. I think it's taking some momentum. We put a date for, for sending comments about the charter. What would be very, very useful if we can compile all the documents as background, like bylaws and other documents from the chapter advisor committee. They have been shared in, in different emails, but that at some point becomes confusing. So if we could put them all together in a document, maybe staff can help us in doing that. That would be very helpful. So we can, we can send that document during next week sometime. People are asking how, how, how the non-pong works or which bylaws are considered or what should they read to, to make any comments or decisions? And also the chapter advisor documents. I know that Andrew shared them, that was very useful. I would like to put them together and, and have them at hand every time people ask for that. So that, that would be interesting.
That's a good idea. And probably it takes like five minutes to put such a list, just with links to the conflict of interest policy, the bylaws. I, you know, yeah. Okay, good idea, good idea. Thanks, Olga.
So just as a practical question, though, Olga asked that staff do that. But the charter has been that the staff are not going to do those kinds of functions precisely because of the accusation prior that.
I know, I know.
That's been captured.
Yeah, I know. Maybe I misunderstood that you could, staff, sorry about you. Staff could help with some pointers to documents. That, that was my, my understanding. Maybe I missed something or misinterpreted something.
No, no, so I, I mean, that's why I provided the pointers to the, the document. But I mean, the, the suggestion here that I heard was that staff should put together a document. And that's precisely the sort of collection thing that is the kind of thing where people accuse.
You can send Mike and myself the pointers and we can do that.
Okay.
Apologies if my.
I get it.
I want to point out that we do have legal, so, from, from ISOT. So we may, we may actually ask for some help there, but we can probably assume some of this stuff.
I mean, literally, this takes five minutes, right? I mean, so, I mean, let's not make a big deal out of nothing, really.
The thing is, the thing is, Gonzalo, you make me read the CHAP recommendations. I've read them like six times. I have to read them again to make sure I've gotten all the right ones. So.
But if you need support, I mean, we can, we can take care of the board. You know, I mean, just, just send that email to the list and we will, you know, compile everything. It's really a trivial exercise, so yeah.
Yeah, that would be useful. So we put all together and inform people that they should consider those documents as reference.
Exactly, exactly. Perfect, thank you. Okay, anything else? Other AOB? Okay, going twice. Okay, good. So we pass to, to my favorite point on the agenda, which is the adjourn. So I moved to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. So thanks, everyone, and the meeting is closed. So you can stop the recording now, Kevin, please.
Yes.